Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Hello.
Hello.
Oh, hello.
This is Steve Thompson.
Hey, Steve.
Steve, how are you?
Hey, Steve.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
I guess it's okay, my camera won't load, I don't know why, but.
It's all we do to the rookies, so.
Oh, no, no. You're in disguise.
I won't, I won't say anything, Steve, okay?
I will, we gotta have that camera rolling.
Yeah.
All right, it's ten o'clock, we will go ahead and get started, so. If you would, please bow your heads for the invocation. Father, thank you for this day, and Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, and Father, we lift up those that have COVID. Uh, Father, as we see the surge in our, uh, community, Father, we just pray that you, you would heal those, and Father, that you would be with all of those in, uh, that work in the hospital, Father, and all those that are in the hospital currently with COVID. Father, just give us wisdom as we work this agenda, we'll give you the credit, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Well, first item is canvas election returns and declare the results for the 2020 general city election. Uh, Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. According to the Texas Election Code, today is the last day to canvass the election results. The canvas is the official tabulation of the municipal election returns canvassed by the city council. The November third election final results were provided from the Ector County and Midland County Elections Office. The votes for mayor, council member District Two, and council member at large were combined of both Ector and Midland results. The total number of votes received in each precinct is attached to the ordinance. The following are the total votes. For mayor, Dewey Bryant received thirteen thousand one hundred and eight. Javier Hoven received eleven thousand eight hundred and four. Gloria Apolinaryo received five thousand two hundred and two. For council member District One race, Mark Mata received one thousand seven hundred and thirty-one. Michael K. Shelton Senior received seven hundred and forty-nine. T.P. Davis received seven hundred and thirteen. Eddie Mitchell received seven hundred and nineteen. For council member District Two, Stephen Thompson received five thousand two hundred and sixty. Rachel Minor received four thousand one hundred and five. For the council member at large, David R. Turner received thirteen thousand four hundred and fifty-four. Latasha Gentry received three thousand six hundred and thirteen. Joanne Davenport-Littleton received four thousand and twenty. And Denise Swanner received eight thousand six hundred and sixty votes. The results declared Stephen Thompson elected as council member District Two. The term is a four-year term. According to the city charter, a candidate must receive a majority of the votes. No candidate received a majority of the votes for mayor, council member District One, and council member at large. The top two candidates for those races will need to go into a runoff at which council will consider later in this work session. It is recommended that the election results be canvassed and presented in the ordinance of first and final approval.
Okay. Since Peggy Dean is not, um, at the meeting, uh, we will have to have everyone vote, uh, so that we will have a majority.
And, and Council, for the record, according to the Texas Constitution, Article sixteen, uh, Section seventeen, it provides that the officials perform their duties of the office. And the local government code, Chapter one seventy-one, it is not applicable to the elections, therefore, it is not a conflict of interest.
So I will need a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, issue the election to council member-elect Stephen Thompson. Ms. Grimaldo.
Yes, Council, according to the Texas Election Code, the presiding office of the, officer of the governing body must present a certificate of election, so Mayor, if you could please read that certificate of election as presented, and it will be mailed to council member-elect Thompson.
Sure. In the name and by the authority of the City of Odessa, Texas, this is to certify that at a general election held on November third, 2020, Stephen P. Thompson was duly elected as council member of District Two. In the testimony whereof, I have hereunto signed my name to the cause of the seal of the City of Odessa should be affixed on the seventeenth day of November, AD twenty twenty. Congratulations, Mr. Thompson.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words?
Uh, well, I'm sorry, my iPad is not doing what it's supposed to be doing, but I can tell y'all, but, uh, I, I just looking forward to working for the next four years with everybody and, uh, trying to move the city forward, uh, I think it's important, uh, I wouldn't have run for this position. So I'd just like to, everybody that I'm, you know, just available, if anybody needs anything, or if I can help in any way, uh, staff or council, either one, I'm just, uh, whatever I can do to help them, I'd be glad to do, I'm gonna try to learn as fast as I can and figure out what's going on, so. Uh, and I appreciate it, Mayor, and looking forward to it.
Thank you, we're looking forward to it. Item three.
When is the swearing-in?
Uh, swearing-in will be at the next meeting.
Okay. How are we gonna do that, you don't know how we're gonna do that.
I'll get with you, uh, we were talking, um, the numbers, um, are pretty high, uh, so we will probably get together, uh, later this week and determine that. Um, we're gonna talk about the, have a COVID discussion at the end, and practically talk a little bit about what council feels like we need to be doing as far as the meetings.
Okay.
Um, item three, call a runoff election for mayor, council member District One, and at-large. Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to the Odessa City Charter, Section forty-seven, and the Texas Election Code, it is necessary to call a runoff election if no candidate receives a majority of the votes cast. In the general election for mayor, District One, and at-large, no candidates received majority of the votes. According to the charter, the two candidates receiving the highest number of votes must file a written request to be included on the ballot, and the ballot order of their standing is in their computations of the votes cast. In this order, the following names will be listed on the ballot. For mayor, Dewey Bryant and Javier Hoven, who received the highest number of votes. For District One, Mark Mata and Michael K. Shelton Senior received the highest number of votes. For at-large, David R. Turner and Denise Swanner received the highest number of votes. Each of these top candidates did submit their written request to be placed on the ballot. After conferring with both the Ector County and Midland Elections Office to find the best date for the runoff, and to ensure the availability of the equipment and the program, it is recommended that the runoff date be December fifteenth, twenty twenty, from seven AM to seven PM. Early voting will be November thirtieth through December fourth and December seventh through December eleventh. The early, early voting dates are within the laws of the Texas Election Code. The proposed early vote centers for Ector County are Ector County Courthouse Annex, the Globe Theater at Odessa College, Salinas Community Building, and the First Church of the Nazarene. For Election Day at Ector County, it's the Globe Theater at Odessa College, Salinas Community Building, and the First Church of the Nazarene. The Midland County Early Vote Center is only one Midland County Annex building. And for their Election Day locations are Odessa Country Club, the Annex Courtroom, MLK Junior Community Center, and Midland Chin Baptist Church. In discussing with Ector County Elections Office, the Ector County Vote Centers were recommended, although additional vote centers can be added. And just on, on a note, the Odessa Christian Faith Center has agreed to be a vote center, but only on Election Day, not early voting. The ordinance provides amending the current budget of fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one to appropriate approximately twenty-five thousand for the runoff election. It is recommended that the runoff election be held December fifteenth, twenty twenty. I can answer any questions.
Can you go ahead and, um, read again, uh, that the current council members are approved to the Texas?
All right, I was gonna ask if we may just abstain from our individual, uh, runoff election. I abstain from mayor and the other two vote, and then the other abstain accordingly, if that would be okay? If that can be done.
Yeah, we could vote.
Yes, that can be done. Sorry, this is Natasha, yes, sir, Councilmember Bryant, that can be done.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that we abstain from our individual runoff elections and vote on the other two accordingly.
Okay, so we can do them as three individual, Natasha?
Yes.
Okay, um, Councilmember Bryant is going from, uh, mayor, so I will need a motion to call a runoff for mayor.
Don't move. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we have one abstention. Um, Councilmember Shelton, do you want to, uh, abstain from voting?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Councilmember District One, I need a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
You have a second, you have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we will have one abstention, all opposed, please say aye. None opposed? Um, I will abstain. Member Bryant, can you do this motion?
I will, please.
I'll let you call this one, since I don't want to merge on this one.
Okay, I'm sorry, all right, we need a motion for the, um, uh, for the, uh, council member at large, uh, for the, the date of the runoff. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With, uh, uh, Mayor Turner abstaining.
Okay. This passes, uh, item three. Thank you, Ms. Grimaldo, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, Ms. Grimaldo.
Randy, um, can you mute everybody except for councilmember? Thank you, Randy. Um, item four, consider authorizing people to apply for and accept amended funds received from the twenty twenty-two Step Speed Occupant Protection Interse- Intersection Traffic Control Traffic and Driving While Intoxicated Grant, Chief Turkey.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, um, I come before you to ask that we, uh, be given the authority to apply for and accept, uh, our step grant, our step grant, um, we've been a part of for many, many years. And, uh, what it does is allow us to work overtime hours to enforce traffic laws such as speeding, seat belts, um, stop signs, red lights, distracted driving, DWIs, all those things that are important to, to traffic safety in, in our community. The amount of the grant is, uh, twenty-four thousand, uh, dollars that we would have seen, that we would receive from the state with a cash match, uh, forty-eight hundred dollars that we would get from the general fund, and that has been approved through sending months. Any questions?
Any question for Chief? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Don't move. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Next, we're not actually conducting a public hearing, we're just discussing the CDBG, uh, coronavirus round three funds of nine hundred and eight thousand four hundred and thirteen and a hundred and fifteen thousand in unprogrammed CDBG coronavirus round one funds. Ms. Sandoval.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Michael, I, on the chief's item just a second ago, you'll actually take action on it next week.
Okay, no problem. Um, discussing, um, Ms. Sandoval. Marita, you may be muted. We can't hear you, Marita.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, the ca- the, uh, item before you is, uh, for the allocation of the CDBGCV funds. We have a total, uh, of one million twenty-three thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars available for projects. This is a co- is a combination of, as you mentioned, of the round three and, uh, some leftover round one funds. Based on council's previous input, the focus of the CARES funding was to be, was to have been, uh, allocated to the following areas. Rent and mortgage assistance, as long with utility assistance, food assistance, homeless assistance, and mental health assistance. We held some public hearings recently with nonprofit agencies and citizens, and those four areas seem to be where the major impacts of the virus are still being felt. In your council books that we provided to you yesterday, you will see there's a total of one million two hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred dollars of requests for the funding. All but one of the applications received, uh, addressed one of the four areas that council had, uh, wanted to focus on. The outside agency requests are from the Boys and Girls Club for a scholarship program, Meals on Wheels to continue their senior and handicap food program, Salvation Army for rent and utility assistance, homeless assistance, and a food program, Family Promise for the concrete pad for the mobile home, furnishings for the home, and ADA adoptions for the mobile home, and that's the mobile home that you provided funding for purchase of with the round one funding. Also, Jesus House has submitted an application, uh, for isolation of COVID-positive homeless people for food, for testing, and for medication. Also, you will see in the book that for the department, I have requested funding to implement a rental, rent, mortgage, and utility assistance program. We, uh, receive calls daily from citizens who need assistance, and there's currently very little, little help available, uh, within the community. Uh, with the department taking on the program, the assistance will be available and provided in a timely manner. We'll be able to, uh, work with the citizens to get the, and get the funding to those that actually need it. This is especially critical at this time because the current moratorium on evictions is expiring December the thirty-first. Under this moratorium, the landlords and, and mortgage companies did not have to wait to start the eviction process until after the deadline, they now are in the process of starting eviction, evictions for these people who are behind. So, uh, shortly after the first of the year, uh, if these evictions go forward, we're going to have a lot of people without housing and probably an influx of foreclosed homes within Odessa. That's just an overview of the requests that are in your book, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I have one question, you mentioned that all but one met the, um, guidelines that we had issued, which one was that, may I ask?
The scholarship program.
Okay.
We went ahead and included it in your book to give it to you, so in case it's something you wanted to, uh, look at, that it's there, uh, and available for you to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Marita.
Thank you.
Um, next is a discussion on considering the acceptance of one point five-six acres of land as right-ofway. Yvonne.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, the developer and the landowner in this area, Bevan Bohr, is conveying one point fifty-six acres of land as a right-ofway for the future One Honeyett Street. Uh, this section of right-ofway is between, uh, Sagebrush Avenue and East Loop Three Thirty-Eight, and completes the connection between Andrews Highway and East Loop Three Thirty-Eight. The staff reviewed the proposed right-ofway conveyance and recommend approval of the attached resolution, and I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Any questions for Yvonne? Okay, and we'll consider that the next, uh, meeting. Um, thank you, Yvonne. Um, item seven, consider award of bid of Eduardo Madrid and Associates for a water waste utility job order contract and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the City of Odessa, Mr. Kerr.
Morning, Mayor and Council, uh, thank you for, uh, looking at this, um, we, uh, you may, uh, may or may not remember, a couple of years ago, we put out a TAP contract because of the, uh, shortage of our staffing to be able to stay up with, uh, of all of our functions, and, uh, we, at that time, Edgardo Madrid and Associates was the only bidder on the contract, and we did contract with them to conduct all of our water and sewer taps. Uh, so, uh, at this time, we released bids again to, uh, do these, uh, continue this operation of contracting taps operations. And we expanded this, this bid to include fire hydrant maintenance, um, as well as, uh, new water, new in, uh, water line replacements, new, uh, uh, sewer line replacements, as well as, um, uh, valve replacements and things. Uh, the first priority of this contract will be the taps operations. And then the additional items that we added were, a- as we are not able, if we are not able to do those things in-house, we will contract on a specific cases in order to get those jobs done. Um, one of the projects that you may remember from a couple of years ago was, uh, the sewer line, uh, east side of County Road West, uh, which was between, uh, Casa Grande and Nineteenth Street. Um, we had an emergency sewer line replacement that we had to do because we did have to do it under an emergency contract and such, we felt our expenses on that were, uh, substantially more than we, uh, we would expect or like. Uh, the contractor did fine, he was bidding based on an emergency case, in which he was having to get out there without a, you know, without further notice and that type of thing, so it's not, it's not a matter of the contractor, but it was a matter of how it was done. So we looked for this bid to help us accomplish some of those types of jobs, smaller types of jobs and things, uh, that might, uh, be required on a, a more, uh, expedient manner. Uh, so in this contract, we're looking at two million dollars for taps work, which we have, uh, been budgeting for the last couple of years based on the taps work. And then about an, an additional one point eight four three million, uh, that would be for the additional types of work for fire hydrants, water system, and, and such. Um, this money is in the budget, uh, we're using the one point eight million from uh, additional water money that we were looking for in doing system improvement, system of, uh, upgrades, replacements. And, uh, so we would request your consideration in, in this contract. We did have two bidders, we had, uh, Edgardo Madrid and Associates, and we had Red Deer Construction. And, uh, the bids were both good bids, um, uh, the, uh, proposal from Edgardo Madrid was the less expensive overall proposal. This con- this bid actually sets unit prices for the work that we, we look to do. And so that was the primary purpose of the, uh, of, of the way the bid is structured, such that as we need to do any specific work, we can pull those items and have it get in cost for. Um, so, any questions, we happy to, to answer.
Any questions from council?
Uh, I have one, Tom, this is Detra. What's the length for this contract?
Uh, it's a three-year contract with, uh, two one-year extensions, uh, at the discretion of both parties.
Okay, and are you still maintaining a staff to do some of these repairs, or, or will Madrid and Associate do all of the taps and, and repair work?
Now, we are maintaining staff as available, we've got at least five positions that we have not been able to fill, which are mostly operators, equipment operators, and, uh, crew leaders. Um, we, uh, we, we do maintain enough staff to, to make repairs on an emergency basis, such as if you have a water line break, sewer, sewer stoppages, and those types of things. And then we continue to do as much of this work in houses as we are able to. We do get, I do utilize them for special projects, such as university recently, we needed to, uh, get some water system out of the way that was, uh, uh, needed to be taken care of before we paid university, and so we did, we also have special projects that we use them on, but because we aren't fully staffed, and we've had difficulty doing so, we, uh, we look for this contract to help us.
Okay. Frozen, are they're not part of the hiring freeze, are they?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, the positions that you still have vacant, they're not a part of the hiring freeze, are they?
No, ma'am, those, uh, uh, have been considered critical positions, so we have them posted, and, uh, we fill them as we can, we had a couple come in from the oil business that were good, very good operators, but then they apparently received some opportunities to, uh, locate elsewhere, and so we lost them. Um, uh, but this, we have decreased the number of positions in this division over the last five years. Um, so that, one, because we weren't really able to fill them anyway, and to utilize those funds in ways that would help, such as this way. Uh, and, um, uh, so we're fortunate, we have some people that are really sticking with us and have stuck with us over the years, but, uh, uh, bringing in the newer ones has been a little challenge.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kerr? Okay, we'll move to item eight, thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight, uh, oh, we're gonna discuss, um, the approval of the request of Lament Three Twenty-Five for original zoning in special dwelling districts. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir, good morning, Mayor, Council, uh, the, uh, property that's, uh, involved in this request is over in the vicinity of, uh, Mission Boulevard and Santa Isabella.
We lost you, Randy.
It's muted.
How about now, Mayor?
We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, this, uh, property is in the vicinity of, uh, Mission Boulevard and Santa Isabella Street. It's, uh, vacant, uh, they're proposing to create five single-family lots, they'll range in size from a half acre to one point seven five acres. Uh, there's not any conflict with any of the city's existing, uh, plans, land use plans, or anything like that, and, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did, uh, vote unanimous to approve this request.
Okay, are there any questions from council on this one? Okay, uh, we'll move to item nine. Uh, consider the approval of a request about Alfonso Leal to rezone a single-family four district to special dwelling district, Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir, uh, this property is down on, uh, uh, South Crane Avenue, it's, uh, uh, right at the intersection of Martinez Place. Uh, the site right now is on single-family four, uh, it had been proposed for some, uh, uh, smaller single-family development in there. Uh, the property has since sold, and the new owner is, uh, proposing a, um, zone change, uh, in order to, uh, develop, uh, oh, it'll be seven triplex units in there, he's, uh, presented a site plan, and it is a good-looking site plan. And, uh, this will be a very good transitional use between, uh, like, South Crane Avenue and the, uh, uh, development to the west, and, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did give, uh, unanimous approval of this request, and staff feels that this would be a very appropriate use for, uh, this property in there.
Okay, any questions from council?
Brenda, did you say seven triplex units in there?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. It's maximizing the use of this property, but it, uh, it's a, it's a very good site plan that they did present, and, uh, uh, I think it'll be a quality development.
Wow, that's great.
That's fantastic. Okay, um, we will move to item ten. Um, consider approval of the request by C five H Investment Group to rezone from single-family three, uh, drill reservation to single-family three.
Yes, sir, what we're doing on this property, it's over in the vicinity of, uh, Tennessee Drive and Santa Monica Avenue, is just removing- Is just removing the DR designation from the property. Uh, documentation uh, related to the removal of the DR has been provided to city staff. And uh, the owner is uh, proposing uh, single-family residential development on the property and this will match. Uh, the existing development in this area. Uh, this has been a, just a long-time drill site. Hadn't been used in forever and we finally got release of the property. And uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval and this would be a very welcome use of the property. To eliminate that drill site and get some uh, uh, residential development out there.
Fantastic. Any questions, council?
That's great.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Renly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, next, discuss uh, the purchase of three side-load refuge trucks for solid waste. Mr. Philip.
Uh, council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item uh, that will be considered for next week is for the purchase of three side-load trucks. These are our trucks that pick up uh, dumpsters at both commercial and residential locations. Uh, these trucks will be purchased utilizing the HGAC Purchasing Cooperative from uh, Rush Truck Center here in Odessa. Yeah, total purchase for the three units is seven hundred sixty-four thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. And the units that we're pulling out, um, they range in age from uh, eight to ten years old. And they all each have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, so it's time to get them out of the fleet and these are scheduled in budget purchases.
Philip, are the price on these still going up?
Actually, uh, th- this year was uh, welcome news. The price that was offered by the uh, dealership was the same as last year.
Good.
Good.
Okay, any more questions for Mr. Philip? Okay, we'll move to item twelve. Um, discuss the award of the purchase of automobile, automobile vehicles for various departments.
Uh, council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is for the purchase of uh, vehicles for the city. These are our white uh, fleet trucks that we have out throughout the city. Uh, we did put this out for bid with the help of the purchasing department. Uh, there were three different types of items we bid out. Item number one was half-ton, single-cap trucks. Item two was half-ton crew cab. Trucks and item one was a single um, uh, three-fourth ton uh, single cab. We did send it to uh, seven vendors and three of those were, were local that received that and that they were, were wanting to bid on it. Uh, we did uh, open the bids on the fifth of this month and we'd like to recommend that item one. And item two be awarded to Caldwell Chevrolet as the low bidders. And item three to uh, Soul Cheviet of Andrews uh, as the low bidder. The total purchase price would be two hundred eighty thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents. In your agenda packet, you'll see the vehicles and what department they belong to. Uh, mileages uh, range anywhere from um, eighty thousand to a hundred thousand. Um, they are um, uh, varying age as well, anywhere from seven to uh, to eight years old. There's, there's one that I'm looking at that's eleven years old. Uh, there is one truck that, that is uh, semi-low mileage that belongs to community development that has thirty thousand miles. And uh, that will be repurposed into the um, into the fleet, but the rest of the items will be um, auctioned and retired. And these are scheduled in budgeted purchases.
Okay, any questions for Philip? Okay, thank you, Philip. Move to item thirteen. I wanna um, discuss a couple of things that have come up with COVID. First, um, I sent all of you a, it's called a trauma service area. Um, map, I sent it to you uh, on your emails. What these are, they're called regional advisory commissions for council. Basically, the state has divided up. Um, regions and these regions. Are separated by hot number of hospital beds uh, and et cetera. Right now, in West Texas, three out of the four uh, are above what the governor is looking for. Anything above fifteen percent hospitality, I'm sorry, hospitality, hospitalization. Is considered um, on this, is of concern to the governor. In our region, which is Region J, we have a lot of sparsely populated areas. Uh. You have Brewster County, um, you have Presidio County, of course, and you have Pecos County. And. What we're seeing, the reason that Amarillo, El Paso and El Paso have decreased their uh. CO levels are because of the numbers they were seeing. Right now, in Odessa, um, we are seeing on Saturday, our percentage was twenty-one point three-nine. Uh, on Monday, it was twenty point twenty. Uh, Midland uh, is looking at eighteen point four-seven, so both Odessa and Midland are over the fifteen percent. As required by the governor. Right now, we are seeing a huge surge in our hospitals. Um, ORMC has twenty-eight patients. Medical Center is over ninety, so we have somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred. Um, and eighteen uh, in the hospitals. Um, they are facing a huge staff shortage right now. Uh, there are a hundred and twenty. Staff members from the hospitals include doctors, nurses, respiratory techs, et cetera, that are out either with COVID. Or being quarantined because they were exposed. Um, the school district has postponed, bringing in the high schoolers. Uh, that was supposed to happen Monday. Uh, they said because of the number of COVID cases that we're seeing, they have postponed that. Um, right now, the J-Rack, which is Region J of the Regional Advisory Council, so they call it the J-Rack. Is at fourteen point four-nine percent. Um, before that's gonna go up any, we're gonna have to see more patients here, which I think is not gonna be a problem. Um, the hospitals are hurting uh, with the numbers. And I asked a couple of questions to Dr. Saravan. I said, if we're seeing these numbers in our hospitals. I know we are currently diverting, but we do have some people that are in our hospitals from outlying areas. And I said, well, if we're hurting, why are we taking people from other parts of the region? And he said plainly and simply. He said, if we have a patient in one of the smaller cities who is on a ventilator. He said, those hospitals typically do not have respiratory techs or respiratory therapist. ICU-trained doctors, ICU-trained doctors go to school for thirteen years as opposed to a regular doctor. And he said, I have to make the decision to bring them in or to leave them there and odds are they're gonna pass away. Uh, last week, we had ten people in Pecos County waiting to be moved up, six of which were on ventilators. So that is part of the reason we see the people coming up into uh, our hospitals, uh, Midland's Hospital. And we are seeing huge numbers come up. Um. So where, what can we do?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
How did the, where is this percentage, fourteen point four-nine percent? What is the percentage of?
It is a percentage, let me get the. It is hospital beds that are occupied versus total hospital beds in the region. So, um, we are looking, when we look at it, like for Medical Center, or we, I'm sorry, we look at it for Ector County. We're looking at total hospital beds. You know, divided, the number of COVID patients divided by the hospital beds to come up with our percentage. Um, one of the problems with our region is there's a hundred and seventy-two psych, uh, psych beds. In um, hospitals that handle. Um, psych patients. Those pa- those beds are not gonna be used for COVID. Uh, they're not set up. And I also asked Dr. Saravan, I said, okay, if you're using, you're running out of beds for COVID, why don't you use other beds? That you have in the hospital? And he said, with COVID, what we have to do is one, we have to be able to centrally monitor that patient. We've all been in a hospital and you walk by the nurses' station and you see a wall of monitors. That monitor heart rates, respiratory rates, blood pressure. And each room has to have oxygen because COVID attacks the respiratory system. And he said, honestly, in a hospital. You design one floor to be more critical care, these, another floor is going to be, you know, people that are. Just had a day surgery and they're just be moving out. And that's what they're running into. CDC, we're, I mean, uh, the uh, feds require that COVID be negative pressure. So air is being sucked out of the hospital rooms so that the air in the hallway comes in, not. The air from the room, leaving the room and going out into the hall to infect other people. And so realistically, there's just not enough hospital beds with the capabilities they need. To be able to handle these. Uh, they are seeing the CCUs fill up. Uh, and right now, um, I know ORMC has a patient. In their emergency room because they don't have enough of a bed to put them into, into a COVID room. Uh, last week, Medical Center had five patients that were in the emergency room, waiting for beds to become available. Uh, up on the floors. So that's where we are. Um, you know, if we were, we hit fifteen percent and we feel like. We want to, as a council, to help the hospitals, we can reduce occupancy to fifty percent. But the J-Rack percentage has to be over fifteen percent for seven days. So we are at least six days from being even able to do that. Um, the current mask ordinance from the state is very difficult to enforce. We've had the discussion. Because it's on the individual. Uh, it's not, if they're in a business and the business lets them in. It's not the business's fault, it's that individual's. And that is, as Michael has discussed and we talked, talked to Chief Kirk, it's very difficult. You don't wanna take an officer off the street to make them babysit in a store. The city of Midland is discussing an ordinance, um, that puts the enforcement on the businesses. Uh, so that if one came into one of my stores, it's my responsibility to make sure they wear a mask or I can get fined. And those are really the three options. Either we can look at adjusting the, adopting the ordinance from Midland that puts it on the businesses. We can either try to come up with an idea of how to enforce the um. Ordinance or the mandate from the governor. Or we can talk about if we get to that point, reducing occupancy. It is not closing any businesses. It is just simply reducing occupancy back to fifty percent. Uh, I did talk to doctor, um, doctor yesterday, I mean, yesterday. They are bringing a portable morgue into one of the hospitals. Um, because there is not enough space. To hold them until they get them to the medical examiner to do what they need to do.
Is that here?
Yes, ma'am, it is here. ORMC is talking about bringing one in. Um, you know, that's kinda where we're at. I just wanted to, to get you up to speed where we are. Uh, where there will be a, switching to two press conferences a week. There will be another press conference at two o'clock today. And another one on Thursday. Uh, I meet with the leaders again tomorrow uh, to discuss this. But um, the hospitals are getting. So I will open it up for discussion. Um, let everybody kinda see what they're thinking. But this is where we're at.
Mayor, does the governor, does monitor that percentage and automatically notify us? Or are we notifying them when we're, you know, at day one, day two, day three? How does that notification happen?
They watch that through the DES DH website. I have made contact with Austin. And said, look, we're, we're hurting. Um, I know that. Plenty of equipment and we do have FEMA nurses in here at the current time. But if a FEMA nurse is here and El Paso gets worse, they pull the FEMA nurses out here and send them to where they need, whether, where they go. And um, so I know Medical Center has FEMA nurses currently and the ORMC does. And I'm sure that Med- uh, Midland Memorial also has. So the city council of Midland is discussing um, their ordinance that they came up with. This is one that the city of Midland came up with. The one that puts the emphasis on the bill, on the businesses. They're discussing it this morning.
Does that, does that uh, fall within the governor's mandate?
It falls, it just changes who's responsible. Um, so right now, you know, the city of El Paso is being sued by the state. Uh, and therein, I believe in one of the appellate courts because the county judge tried to shut down the county. And so they're having problems there. But council does not have the option of saying, we're gonna pull back anymore because in um. Governor Order thirty-two, they took that authority away. So um, we're very limited on what we can do to protect the citizens, but I have been in contact with Austin and said, you know, hey. Start watching here because we are seeing the numbers go up so dramatically. So, any discussion?
Mayor, I think it's important, you know, when you meet with the heads of the organizations, you know. I've seen, heard and experienced is that, and, and this may contribute to our numbers, very little, but every little bit. Um, it seems that. The major organizations, us, the county, the ECSD. Maybe we need to compare and make sure we're all following CDC guidelines as far as people returning back to work. I've seen, uh, you know, just a variety of, this is when you can come, this is when you can't come, you know, and it's, and it's different. Even within organizations and so it would be very good if we kinda stay uniform on that. Because some, you know, are sending people back seven days, some are saying maybe fourteen days. I know we don't have to do the negative te- test anymore to come back. But maybe just discuss that at your meeting, you know, that we, we really, people are getting mixed signals on when. It's safe to return and so we may, we may have people returning sooner and therein is.
We are, actually, we've talked last week and we're, Devon is coming up with some amazing. Um, commercials to be able to put out that are a little more serious. Let's say, you know, it's time, we've gotta get people wearing masks. If we could move from, say. Say we're at forty percent, if we could go to seventy percent, we could slow it enough to get these people out of the hospital.
Right, but I think it's a mask. We also need to, you know, know that we're following the guidelines as far as sending sick people back. You know, we, we have to make, I think that's a good discussion when all the entities are meeting.
Ma- Mayor and Council, may I, uh, this is Robert Carroll uh, from Legal. I was asked by Natasha to, to look over these orders because uh, as Mayor had mentioned earlier, thirty-two really does. Sort of handcuff what you can do um, as far as uh, reducing the number of the occupancy rate down to fifty percent. You have to be up a certain percentage in your um, trauma service area, which we're not at. Um, but uh, GA twenty-nine, the face covering, has still not been repealed. Um, it has not been. Um, at all uh, edited or, or anything else by any further order. So GA twenty-nine, the governor have it. Um, passed, does allow us to uh, enforce a mask mandate. Um, and not just under a declaration or an ordinance passed by council, but GA twenty-nine allows us through the governor's order itself. To enforce a mask mandate, to use local officials where necessary, uh, as the order says, to, to be able to enforce these, these mask mandates. And that, uh, that can extend to businesses. Um, if businesses are allowing people to um. If they're allowing them to, to violate this, this order that I, I don't think a lot of people realize is still out and outstanding and has not, has not been appealed. Um, you, we, we have the ability through just GA twenty-nine. Um, to begin to enforce that. It, it has a penalty clause in there, a, a, a citation with a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine connected to it. Um, we have that ability, so there, that is there. Um, I just wanted to contribute that to the discussion and make sure that everyone understands that we, we have a mask. The state has a mask mandate in place. Um, so we don't necessarily have to completely reinvent the wheel. Um, but we, we, we do have that option to declare that we are going to enforce GA twenty-nine.
I just looked before the meeting, they hadn't updated the numbers. The J-Rack, which is a regional, is now at fifteen point seven-three. Uh, Ector County right now is at twenty-one point five-six, so it's increased from yesterday.
And uh, just remember, so if that number stays there for six more days consecutively. we are able to reduce under GA 32, we are able to reduce occupancy limits down to 50%. Um, in certain businesses under GA 32, we just have to be there for, um, seven consecutive days with 15%. I know that that sounds harsh, but that's, that's what GA 32 has. Um, and we, um, Natasha also spoke to the governor's office. We've spoken to um, several other organizations and the attorney general's office, uh, and they're all pre all of their answers are pretty consistent in GA 32 handcuffs us until we're there at that seven days. Uh, but again, we do still have that power just, just simply under GA 29 to, uh, to, to enforce the mask mandate across the state.
Robert, does that stay at that, at that percentage as a region or as a city?
As a region, councilwoman.
I just checked mid, the numbers, they increased to 19.28. So the two increases may have been what brought us over 15% for the region.
It, it probably was mayor, and that's, and that's what we were, um, because we, we, I didn't, to be quite honest with you, didn't know what a trauma service area was until I read GA 32 and had to look that up. Um, what's affecting us is these smaller counties that may be shipping people to ORMC or, or larger hospitals, um, outside of their counties. So their counties weren't reporting very high cases. Um, or there are the number of people in beds, um, just simply wasn't high enough to push our area above that 15%, but it sounds like, um, at least for today, if we get it for another to six days, um, we, we are then able to help enforce GA 32, giving us the ability to reduce, um, occupancy down to 50%.
Mayor, have we had any conversations with the big box stores? I know we were going to talk about just to encourage them to, um, again, be more proactive with how, how it was in the beginning, because obviously that has gone down quite a bit.
Uh, Michael is going to send, um, some of the fire inspectors out to talk to them. I'm going to get the numbers and call them personally and just say, this is what we're looking at. That if we don't do something, I mean, it's, I think the thing that we see now is back when this started, we didn't know many people personally had it. I've seen five deaths, just people I know. Uh, and you know, you've got friends and you know, employees that are all being pulled out of the workforce now, which puts a strain on all businesses. Um, because I know unfortunately there is a teacher, uh, from ECSD that they're very concerned about, um, that is on a ventilator. And we're seeing that go throughout all of the organizations. So, other comments?
Mayor, what are our, our, our alternatives or what are our plan of actions or what can we, what can we do? So, and, and let me see if I've got it right for, uh, Robert, as you were saying, after seven days or six or seven days, we can incorporate the, 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 uh, 50% if it mandated, or is that something that we can choose ourselves? Also, uh, is the opportunity of the, along those same lines to, uh, to put the, uh, the pressure on the businesses to monitor, uh, the mask wearing.
We have to, with the 15%, it has to be the J rack, which is and it has to be for seven days. Uh, once it's seven days, we have the authority to reduce down to 50%. Uh, I believe El Paso has actually pulled down to 25% just because it is horrible in El Paso. They have four portable morgues. Um, and I know Lippick right now is bringing in portable hospitals uh, because of their numbers. But that's, we can enforce it on businesses. Um, I think that would have to be a come up with a plan and put out the word that we're going to enforce it, but then it's finding who we're going to get to enforce it.
Right.
Uh, because if we use code inspectors, you know, are they going to get into a situation they're not comfortable with?
Right.
Uh, but whereas fire, you know, fire inspection, they are duly authorized law enforcement agents. Uh, and so that's something that, um, we would have to discuss.
Mayor, do we know what the county is doing? Are they, you know, what are their efforts? Do we know? I know that
County's not, from my understanding, aren't doing anything.
Yeah, because if, if you look at it, if you enforce it, but then you put it on the mandate of the stores to enforce it, that's where you get your conflict at because a lot of people would say to the point that I ain't gonna wear a mask, but I still want to come in here and shop. But then when you, when you try to reason with them, they, it, it gets into a battle between the consumer and the, 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 the store, and that brings in more problems and situations that's going on.
Exactly right. It's just, how do we get the numbers down, you know? That's the
Yeah, but then that, my thing is, is, is the citizens needs to look, look at it in a different way of saying, if we wear the masks, we bring this down, it'll, it'll, it'll solve the whole problem, but it's the concerns of the citizens to stand up and say, well, I'm not doing it for myself. I'm doing it for somebody else.
That's something we talked about and, you know, I don't know if y'all ever saw the breast cancer. You know, when people go on breast cancer walks, they wear a name on their shirt that says, I'm walking for my mother or I'm walking for maybe my grandmother. And, you know, we talked about doing something like that because I don't wear a mask for me. I've got a six-year-old granddaughter that's diabetic. And I got an 87-year-old mother. I wear it for them to make sure I don't take it to them. And that's why Devin has come up with some great ideas.
Same way I am, Mr. Mayor. When I wear the mask, I represent, uh, the district and I represent the church that I pastor that's doing the people that I'm responsible and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to do the best and I'm looking out for everyone. I'm looking out for everyone in District One. Plus I'm looking out for everyone at, at Pilgrim Rest Missionary Baptist Church as their pastor and as a city councilman in the district.
I've talked to, uh, I talked to the, uh, ministry group and I think I'm going to send a letter to them. Uh, Devin and we had brought in, um, one of the consultants from, um, that we hired to do something to send out to the churches so that if they have a video system, they can actually play for their citizens and not necessarily coming from me or, but coming from maybe Tatum, you might be able to get Jay. Channel seven has been fabulous as far as putting out good messages. I don't know if you've seen it, J Hendrix did one. And they're talking about it. Channel seven's been a great partner. But we've just got to come up with ideas because you know, I'm I'll tell you this, Russell talked last week and he said, I have had to go out and find places for 40 patients in other hospitals outside our region because of the fear of not having enough beds. And my fear is a citizen's going to go there might not have a bed. You might have to go to somewhere else. And that's a real possibility. So. But I just wanted to go with this. If you have any ideas, just email me or something and we can start to maybe put together a, a marketing campaign like we've talked about and talk to the churches. And, um, you know, it may be going to the point to where we have to tell the stores, we're going to have to start enforcing.
Mayor, I just think, you know, we just need to ask, you know, I don't know if the O A is on here now, but we need to ask the public to please help us and help them. I mean, we have a problem. And we need to know, you know, it's, and as I said before, you read it and you think about the government can't tell me what to do. Um, it's political, it's beyond all that. We're trying to save lives and whatever part we can play, we need to do it and we need to do it quickly and we need to help our medical community. I mean, I don't care if we get more beds, if we have nobody to serve those beds. Where are we? And we have to be a community at this point. It's not, it's not us versus them. It's not government versus the people. It's trying to bring our community back to a level where we don't have to shut down and we don't have to face, you know, economic problems, but we've got to do something and we've got to do it quickly. I mean, we have to. And we've all been affected and we're all going to be affected. And, and I just think we have to do some action. Something, you know, something that works for all of us. I don't, I know we can't afford to put police out there to police mask and I, and I agree with that, but we, there's got to be something we can do. And, 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 and it starts with each of us, with, with every member of this community. It starts with our community. We've got to be able to pull together and say, you know, maybe I don't agree, maybe, you know, whoever that is, not me, I agree with the masking, but whoever would not. And just do it for us. Just do it for the, we're just, you know, just look at the hospital numbers and do it for the nurses, do it for the doctors. We've got to, they've got to know we want to help. And we've, and we as a community have got to take this serious.
Well, and part of it is, they're telling me school district is doing a fantastic job. If Dr. Murray leaves his desk, he has to wear a mask and a shield before he can leave. That's policy for schools.
Right.
And they're saying, we're seeing it. They're getting it from the community. Same thing the hospital's been saying is they get it maybe if they go out to a restaurant, they get it if maybe they go to a party. We saw a lot of parties after Halloween. We have got really realistically, I think about two months and we should start seeing COVID move away. Uh, the governor already has in place a plan for the vaccinations when they come in. They're first going to the hospitals, uh, first responders, and then they're going to the nurses' homes to take care of those. But if they had the 120 employees that they've got out sick, it would make it a lot easier on them to take care of the people they're trying to take care of. So I'm going to talk to Michael and move forward with the marketing. And I'm going to send something out to the, um, all the churches and visit with the stores. So is there any other ideas anybody has?
Hey, Mayor, am I allowed, am I allowed to say?
Yeah.
The only, the only thought that I have on that is that I think that if, if I was a business owner, restaurant is a great example. I think I would be, uh, more inclined to police the mask wearing coming into my operation. I would have to go back to 50%. So it, it, we, I don't know why we can't, you know, give those business owners, you know, this, here's your choice. We don't want to do this, but if you'll help us do this, uh, and we, we won't mandate we go back to 50%. And I think that, I think you'll get a lot of cooperation out of, of the, these business owners. So we can't shut down our economy. I, it's just moving. And everybody's going to get the, my opinion is everybody's going to get this stuff sooner or later. But that being said, unless you get lucky enough to get a vaccine first, but I, I just think put the owners back on the business owners and, and really press for that help.
That's a good point, Steve. I will do a, uh, a recorded, um, message to the citizens and we'll put it on the website like we've done with the other ones. And we'll go from there. So.
Uh, Mayor, may I, uh, jump, uh, jump in real quick?
Sure.
Uh, this is the chief, chief of fire rescue, real quick. Um, you know, so we get a, a daily update from one of our captains. And, uh, we do see our positives going up as well in the department. You know, we've got nine that are unavailable for work right now. We got several that are pending. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's out there, no doubt about it. I guess my question is, I mean, that is the mask, uh, the mandate on the mask, is that a is that a, is that a big issue? Is that a deal breaker for the community, you think?
I think just people, you know, you got some all over the political spectrum that say, I'm not going to wear it and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Thing is, is if, I'm guessing we're at 40% and I think that may be a little high. If you could go from 40%, say to 70 or 80%, you're going to see the spread slow down dramatically. But the problem is you go into any store and you see a lot of people, most people aren't wearing masks.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's the biggest problem. You know, I was talking on the radio yesterday. I said, okay, I'm in the grocery store and I see Dewey Bryan at the end and he starts walking towards me. Neither one of us are wearing masks and I sneeze. Would you have rathered me had a mask on? And would you have rather had a mask on when somebody sneezes? I mean, because that's how it spreads for a cough or something like that. And we've got to get people thinking about it and people are tired of hearing it. And, but we seek the gold line at the end. We just have to get there.
Well, I mean, I I had a bad door knob this weekend at Home Depot. And, uh, we did, I mean, it's unfortunate, but I, I mean, a, a majority are, wear masks, but you do have a small percentage out there that are not in a mask. And usually, you know, and, and again, I'm not trying to pick on any, anybody here, but it's just, it's usually the young, the younger folks that are not wearing them.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dewey. I saw you talking.
I think, I, I, again, I think what you're saying is so true, Mayor and, and Chief. It, it's got to be a responsibility to individuals. Mayor brought a great point up is that, you know, for the love of our neighbors, for the love of our community, uh, you know, you'd hope to retake the responsibility ourselves. I do agree with, with Steve also. I think the first step is, is a whole lot better that one way than the other. And, and, uh, uh, I, I think it's unfortunate. We have to look at doing something and I wish that we as a community would, would stand side by side and start doing it for, for our, for our neighbors.
That's a good point.
Yep. Ma- Mayor, this is, uh, Michael. I just, um, I think the council's aware, but certainly as an organization, we're, we're keeping a very close tab on our positivity rate. Right now, as of this morning, we had about 43 people impacted by COVID-19. And when I say impacted, it doesn't mean that they themselves were positive, uh, somewhere, some were awaiting tests and some had, um, a close, uh, connection to someone who was positive. I've required all of my staff, my senior staff to ensure that we have a tolerance for not wearing a mask in the presence of others and, and certainly the public. Um, I, I think you heard also from Steve, um, and or Philip that our, our, our seasons are ending with the sports association. So that's good. We're going to kind of uh, with their participation, keep those closed for a while. Um, all of our, uh, rental facilities such as our community centers, those have all been, uh, uh, we're not renting those right now. Um, again, we're, we, we know that this is a big problem within the organization. We require masks when you come into our building if you're from the outside. Uh, and then we will begin to, like everybody else, we have those individuals aren't necessarily following the rules diligently and we will begin to deal with those individuals through discipline. But I, I, I did, I think you're right. It is a matter of responsibility and, and certainly I know myself and Philip have sent the, our speakers very seriously with our employees and we're going to keep pressing to our folks that they've got to wear a mask and they've got to protect one another because ultimately that's where it ends up.
Well, we talked about also about closing the facilities such as closing the complex, closing the soccer fields and things like that, just to help slow it. But, you know, that's something that we need to discuss as council.
You know, uh, let me mention one thing also. For the community that are taking this very seriously and they're, they're reading their, or they're wearing their mask, et cetera. I also want to commend, uh, has hosted upward basketball for many years and it's just another basketball league, you know, for the kids. And they have canceled that season. Uh, because, simply because of the COVID issue. And, oh, you know, with that being said, you know, I think we have uh, on several occasions with our businesses, our stores, to enforce the mask mandate, put the signs back out. They had them out. You know, that you, you required to wear a mask to enter the building, you know, kind of one of those no shirt, no shoes, no mask, no service. And so, you know, I just want to continue to plead with the public to do their part. As a city council, yeah, we have some people that are demanding that we take leadership, that we do this, that we have these ordinances. And I respect that, but there's that small percentage of people, you cannot force to do anything. You can penalize them to continue to do that. But I do take offense to anyone that is insinuated that as a council, we have not stepped up because this council has stepped up. And to that, the million dollars that we provided to our health, our hospitals, the free testing, the city of Odessa has stepped up. What we're asking now is that the citizens of Odessa
Good.
That's good.
Okay. Well, unless anybody else wants to discuss, we'll go ahead and, um, move to item 14, uh, recess for executive session is authorized by the Texas government. Zero seven one consultation with the attorney. City council adjourned into executive session to consider pending or contemplated litigation. Also, uh, person of matter deliberate unemployment evaluation duties, discipline complaint or dismissal of the city attorney. Um, Texas government code five five one point zero seven. So I need a motion to go in executive. So I need a motion to go in executive.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Eleven oh nine, we will now go into executive session. Uh, so if you will log off and go ahead and go into the next one.
Do this.
Do we have Mara?
That's what I'm looking at.
There she is.
There she is.
Okay, so we've got everybody back. Okay. Um, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Oh, moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are now out of executive session at eleven twenty-one. Um, and no action was taken in executive session. Uh, do we have a motion?
A move that we accept the, that we accept the contract that we have with, uh, our city secretary, city attorney, Natasha Brooks.
Okay, we motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Natasha.
Thank you.
Next, uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? We now stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.